We all rise for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Secretary will perform a roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Breyer?
Here.
Mr. Baratia?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Mayhem?
Here.
Mr. Blauer?
Here.
Okay. All the board members should have received the minutes from the November 20th and December 4th meetings.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, so motions made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have seen.
Okay, we have one abstention.
I don't have a copy.
Okay. All right. So, in both, both of you, both with aye as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, that motion passes. Our next item, actually, our first item this evening is an adjourned public hearing for site plan and special use permit for Verizon Wireless Spook Hill Park, small wireless facility. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Good evening. Scott Olson from Young Summer for the record. We haven't submitted anything new since, at least November, I believe. As you know, we've proposed three different locations along Spook Hill Road, and I think the neighbors weren't at the, I think it was the December 4th or, I can't remember which meeting.
It was the December 4th meeting, they weren't there.
Okay, they weren't there, so, but we did accommodate their concern to put it further away from the second location, basically before the curve on the road. Nothing's changed, we're still happy to do that if that's what the board would like.
Okay. Okay, so, in regard to the, to the staff, it met all the requirements, I guess now, engineering is okay?
We had no further comments.
Okay, same as planning?
I don't know if you heard during the pre-meeting, Jim has asked that a condition be added, that you shall provide the meets and bounds for the service agreement area?
Yeah, for the, for the right-of-way agreement.
Oh, okay, yeah, to be an attachment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's, you know. To circle survey that area?
Yeah, I know, and, and that was kind of one of the things, because the dimensions that are on there are from edge of pavement to the pole, and then from an existing utility pole to, to the pole itself, so, I just, should, should the road be repaved, or should the existing utility pole get moved, I'd like a little bit more concrete.
Understood, we'd survey it, yeah, and typically we would, we usually wait till after the zoning, because as we know, it can move.
Right, so, and if you could do it also for the Kent Road one, too?
Of course.
And we'll do it as an attachment.
Of course.
Okay, so that would be the only condition to this, the amendment to this, to this resolution. Okay, so with that, is if, nobody has any, actually, it is an adjourned public hearing, so we do have to open the floor for any public comment. So I will open the floor, if there's anyone here that wishes to speak on behalf of the Spook Hill Park application, please come up to the podium. All right, seeing none. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries. Okay, so, with that, we have the resolution before us this evening, and entertain a motion, entertain a motion to go and approve the resolution as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want to say that I reviewed the material from prior sessions and am voting aye.
Okay, do we have any, anybody opposed? Seeing none, anybody want to stay? Okay. So, resolution's been approved. On to our next item. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion regarding site plan and special use permit for Verizon Wireless communication facility on Didel Road. We have the resolution this evening. Is there any open items that we need to be aware of on this application?
The only thing I would ask the applicant is if there's been any update from the FAA?
I think there's still, sorry? We know that it's going to have to be lit. I mean, and I'm pretty sure the FAA has made that determination.
Okay.
So, because of its proximity to the airport.
So it's just going to be a light on the?
You know, there's also, like we said, we don't, it's also, I believe the regulations allow the FAA to basically require it to be painted also. So there's a strong likelihood it's going to be red and white painted, so, but the good thing is that it's back between, you know, this location is preferable, we believe, to the alternate location that was discussed by several of the neighbors, because it's kind of within the trees, so that shouldn't be, you know, as visible. And the light for the new members on the board, the light that's being used, that we had to use for another site, it basically limits the spread to the ground by, and I don't know how they do technology, but they basically have an angle coming out from the light, so that, you know, if you're immediately below it, or, you know, next to it, you don't really see it, it's like a 10 or 14 degree spread, basically, and it significantly limits light spread to the ground. The light details are in your materials.
What about the color of the tower? Does the FAA have any comment?
It's going to be, you know, it would have to be red and white, if, you know, for marketing, that's their typical regulation, you know, usually when they're located to the, near the airports. If it has to be marked, it's red and white. Correct. Otherwise, it would be galvanized steel. Gray.
We just don't have the determination yet, I think.
Okay.
The, the tower on Airport Drive, do you know if that is painted? I believe it has a light on it.
I don't think so.
Is that the one that's on the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's right next to the approach.
Yeah, I, I remember actually doing that one, and I, I think it's an 80-foot tower, I don't know that it's painted, and I don't think there's a light on it either.
I don't think so.
I don't think, for whatever reason, maybe it's not in the approach pen, I don't know.
It might be off the side, okay.
But I don't recall, the FAA required either of that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's enough light in that area to kind of direct them to the airport anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's very close to the airport, so it's basically on final for, as you're taking off, it's, it's next to the clear zone for the runway, but it's not within, it's not directly, you know, past runway.
Yeah, I don't understand why, I just remember that they did not.
It's probably, I mean, typically what they do is the, the approach zones have more or less a cone, so it may be outside the cone, because it's so close to the runway.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, seeing over the, again, just the conditions that need to be met. With that, I'll entertain a motion for the, approve the resolution for site plan development and special permit.
No, no conditions on that resolution yet, right? We don't need anything else, do we?
No, no, it's just the only conditions are the things they have to meet in order to get final, get final approval, final signature is, just as we were discussing, the FAA approval.
Yeah, I'll make that motion as.
Okay. All right, so, motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
Take care.
Have a good day. Okay. Moving on, our next item on the agenda this evening is 33 Middle Bush Road for site plan and lot line consolidation.
I think you have to change the owner's name on that resolution.
Didel.
Didel.
Hi, Troy Wojcikowski, engineer for the applicant tonight.
Okay. You received both of the resolutions.
I received the resolution last month.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
The only changes to it since then were dates and the new board members' names.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Okay. So with that, you have no, no objections to the way the resolutions are written, so I'll just put it up to a vote at this point, and I guess being we have two separate resolutions, we have to do them separately. First one is resolution of site plan development. Entertain a motion to approve as drafted?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. The other item is the lot line consolidation. Entertain a motion for resolution of preliminary and final subdivision approval?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's made?
I'll second it.
Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries as well. So you're all set?
All right.
Take care while you're meeting all the conditions and go from there.
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Okay. All right. Next item is Tora Groso subdivision. Anybody here for, for that this evening? All right, are your engineers here or no?
No.
Just you just came by yourself, or?
Yeah, but I do remember last December 1st, when we had our last meeting, the site distance and the turtle things, they were already taken care of, they were asked of my guys by.
Yes, you got the?
The only thing that I'm not sure of is the, the shared driveways. I'm not sure of that yet.
You talk about the?
The current proposal doesn't have a shared driveway.
Excuse me?
The current proposal doesn't have a, a shared driveway.
Okay, I, I just didn't know anything about that, that's the only thing I don't know about, but I do know about the turtle situation was taken care of by the county.
Yeah, the documentation from D E C, I believe that was added to the plan.
As part of the, well, it's, it hasn't been added to the plan.
It's a condition, it's a condition to put it into the, into the, into the plan set, so that will be in there. And I think that was right, that was all we had.
And the D E C, we did get an approval, not an approval, but?
Well, the mitigation, that will need to be added, yeah. And the DPW, the county DPW, I was not aware that that's an outstanding.
She was only now.
I know. Is she representing us?
I don't think they're here for this, all right.
Amy, can you comment on the?
All right, so?
Know anything?
Hi, you know, as my understanding of the resolution was prepared.
Yeah. So the, I guess the only question was, that we had was, is there any specific requirements from the county for two driveways that are close to each other, I mean, do they ever express a preference for a shared driveway over two?
Amy, can you just go to the microphone?
There've been times where they've wanted a shared curb cut and then split, basically at the property line.
The most recent plans we have show individual driveways such that.
Was it different prior to?
Yeah, it started out as a?
Started out as a shared, then it was a, separate driveways with a shared curb cut, and then it was separate driveways.
So I'm sure it's because of comment from the county. That she would have been initiated by DPW.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't see it in my files, do you have an approval from the DPW?
I don't have it, let me, I'll, let me see if I can get it from Brian.
You know what, we amend this to just make that a condition?
Yeah, just throw it in.
It's not in the conditions, and it should be.
It'll, it'll read, condition E, applicant shall obtain all necessary outside agency approvals for the project, including but not limited to the Dutchess County Department of Health and the Dutchess County Department of Public Works.
Okay. Got it?
Okay. Okay. All right, so I guess it's, I guess if their final set of plans is, is okay, I mean, we could vote on it, we're just the, we'll leave it as an open-ended item.
It's just, it's an approval that they'll need to get before it can be?
Right, so for some reason, if for some reason it's, you know, if something's changed from what we originally approved, then it just comes back to the board, I guess, at that point. All right. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion for, entertain a motion to approve the preliminary and final subdivision approval for Tora Groso subdivision.
Okay, I'll make that one.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining on that. I'm also abstaining on that.
Okay. All right, so, motion still passes with two abstentions. So I voted aye also, so, so this is approved at this point, okay?
Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome. Okay. All right, so our next item on the agenda this evening is the Joey Estates.
Joey Estates is a proposed convention, conservation subdivision. We are showing the conventional layout to obtain a lot count, so we can be referred back to the?
You want to introduce yourself?
Amy Barmer-Derry with Deitz Secosa Engineering, sorry.
Yeah, we have a few new board members, so, they're not familiar.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we have a conventional layout to establish a lot count, with that lot count, we can then go back to the town board, and the town board can allow the planning board the right to modify lot requirements, so that we can get a conservation subdivision, which will allow for a much smaller impact environmentally, a lot less road, and bring the lot count that we establish to a different kind of subdivision, which would be more environmentally friendly.
Yep. Okay. So with that, I mean, this is, we've been going back and forth, and I know that we just received the December 5th letter from, from the biologist today, so, I mean, nobody's had a chance to really kind of dig into that.
Okay.
So we, you know, again, it's, you know, if it was passed over, you know, a few weeks ago, we probably would have had a position to address that letter today. So I guess, we have a bunch of new members, I mean, I know there was a lot of discussion, we talked during the workshop tonight. So before we turn it over to the session, anybody, anybody on the board want to, you know, ask any questions in particular to this? I know we did go over a lot of it through the, through the workshop, but if anybody has anything specific they want to ask the applicant, we'll turn it over to the, to the staff.
Is there any way that I can get a hard copy of that map there?
I don't think, I don't think any of us have a?
No, nothing submitted to us yet.
Yeah.
Oh, I got you. Of that particular?
This is just a display board, yes, you can, I can get you a hard copy, but this is the same layout that was submitted to you in November.
Yeah, so the issue we're having right now is that, you know, with the changeover in the board, a lot of the plans, at least the paper sets, were given to the previous members, so it would probably be in the best interest to before, because I don't think we're going to come to a number tonight, I think that we still have a little bit of work left to go, and we'll discuss that, but, you know, there will be another submission, I think we're, you know, members that need the hard copy to kind of look at, because again, sometimes it's difficult, it's difficult to look at the, you know, on a computer.
Right.
It's a difficult, you know, to make heads or tails, but it's good to have just something laid out in front of you. So with that, being that's one question, would, does anybody else have anything other than our professionals getting the information they need to get to a lot count? Okay, I have no other question.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, would it be helpful to the new board members if we just had a little discussion as to?
We could, I mean, we could have a discussion, I mean, it?
That the applicant could make a pitch as to how it, how it kind of lays out, or, I don't know, would that be helpful?
Not really at this point, Ken.
No, I'm just asking the new members.
If you guys, the new ones, you want them to go into a little more detail with their description of it, or ready to go?
Mr. Chairman, if you may, if I may.
Yeah.
My name's Kenneth M. Stenger, I represent the applicant here, and I, for the new board members, I just wanted to kind of be sure that we all understood the, kind of the three-step dance that we're engaged in. There's a statute in the town zoning code that says that the town board can give you the ability to cluster a conventional subdivision by clustering, you, you gain certain open space benefits, you gain infrastructure shrinkage, you gain a number of, of, of things you may or may not wish to have in terms of clustering, but that would be your decision. The predicate to that, your ability to do that, other than to consider this as a conventional subdivision, is a resolution from the town board giving you that authority to do that. Now, your authority, if you're, this, I don't mean this, I know everybody knows this, but for anyone who's new, your authority to cluster this is based on what you can find on, as of right lot count, and so you can't exceed that number, you can make it smaller than that number, but that's your, that's the maximum number. Now, the town board can't set that number, you have to set that number. The usual, the way that law is written, is you go to the town board, and you ask them to give you the authority, then we come here, then you set the lot count, then you decide, you decide whether you want to cluster or not. But we've been trying for a year to get the town board to do that without any success or luck. We do now have a court, we have a judge who has ordered them to proceed with this application. So, I'm trying to get us on that agenda, get some direction for you guys, but so, so far, I guess I've got, I've got the wrong address in my letters or something, because they're not responding at all. However, so, so you will understand, what's proposed here is just the lot count, so we can go back to the town board and say, this is the maximum lot count, will you please, it doesn't mean that the town, that the planning board has approved it, doesn't say that 88 lots works, or that, that, but it is a possible maximum lot count, can we please go back to the planning board now, and give the planning board the authority and the ability to be creative in how this lot count is done? It doesn't mean that you've agreed to 88 lots, it's just the max cap, can't go, can't go more than that.
Well, is that, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Yeah. And, thank you for coming, I'm obviously one of the new board members here. I reviewed a lot of the material, not all of it, and from the material I reviewed, in terms of how you arrive at that maximum unit count, it's very difficult to ascertain, given the information on steep slopes, wetlands, and how that would lay out in a viable way if you were going to do an actual subdivision.
I think what, I'll speak to my colleague, but I think this is, that's the engineering piece, you just heard the legal show for a few moments, but I'd let my colleague address that particular concern.
All of the items that are required in the section of the code are shown on the map, the steep slopes, the grading, the existing wetlands, any environmental, existing environmental impacts that would be modified, everything is shown per the section of the code. Initially, it was an 88 lot count, we got wetland flagging back, and that brought our lot count down to 79, 80, 79 building lots, one water supply lot, so, we have all of the information we need to give the information that's required in the section of the code. So, that is what this layout is based on, there is one thing that was brought up about the 10% of minimum lot requirement being a wetland area, so that will knock this number down maybe three lots, but that, everything, everything that's required of the section of the code is shown on this map.
There is, there is one thing that, that we did discuss earlier, and it's just the issue with the bridge. The issue with the bridge, so, whether or not that's really realistic, you know, to have that on this plan, because, again, you know, the highway superintendent would have to accept that, you know, as part of this plan if it was a conventional subdivision, and to be honest, I don't think there's many municipalities that will, you know, accept a bridge because due to the maintenance factors, you know, and possible replacement costs in the future. You know, it costs a lot more to replace a, you know, to replace a bridge than it would be to pave, you know, however many miles of roadway.
There's nothing in that section of the?
I know there's nothing in it, and that's why I refer to, you know, I refer to, you know, to our council, whether or not that should even be as part of this.
Independent of that, the bridge would require a wetland disturbance permit, which I don't think should be an assumed element of any subdivision, standard subdivision application.
I put the bridge in to eliminate any wetland disturbance, the bridge is there to span the wetland, it's going from one side of the adjacent areas to the other.
So you're not proposing any wetland disturbance as a part of that bridge?
Correct, it's a whole part of the bridge.
And the intermittent wetland, the intermittent wet area at the front of the property that the road goes through?
That's addressed in the wetland report, that isn't there.
So we don't have a wetland report?
I just gave it to me.
Okay.
I just handed it to her, and?
And the letter that we got earlier today says that the wetlands were flagged August 10th, 2003, is that a typo? Or were they done 20 years ago?
They were re-flagged recently, within the past three months.
Okay, so we need to get that?
Yeah, it should be 23.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your point, and I would just, I think the way this would work is that it's, to get to a maximum lot count, we're looking at what the statute says is permitted or not, what might be a practice within a town, would that be relevant in considering the project after the maximum lot count is there, so you may well say, we have a maximum possible lot count of 88, I'm not sure, you will. And there's a question about this bridge, but maybe we can cluster to get the same group or the same number of houses that will avoid the bridge. So I understand the point you're raising, and what I'm suggesting is that in getting to the maximum lot count, we can't take into consideration things that may fall out with security policies from town to town, except that when it comes back to you, that's an extraordinarily relevant issue.
Right, correct, I, I understand, but that if the town board turns this application down, let's say, and you do come back for this, this type of a conventional subdivision, you know, that at the end of the day, the reality would have been that, you know, nine to 10 lots would have been lopped off anyway.
That's correct.
Because, right, and now all I'm saying is that, you know, in the reality of what we're looking at today, you know, that might, you know, be the case, even getting the wetlands disturbance permit, or, or even a, you know, because I believe it's the board has to approve the, you know, construction permit through at the wetlands as well, correct? So I mean, it's, you know, we'd still have to go through that process?
Yes, I know.
In the future.
Right.
So whether or not that's approved or denied, I think, you know, again, I think it's a relative, a relevant issue at this point.
The only thing, the town, the town board won't further disapprove it, what they'll do is if they're inclined to do so, is trust you to use your skill to design this in a, in a fashion that will allow that layout of housing to be more consolidated within that space. They may say they don't want you to do it, I can't stop them from saying that.
Correct.
They say it, I have to be able to say to them, no matter what happens, it won't be more than this number of lots, but when it comes back to you, you will use your skill, your insight, your analysis, to make a determination as to whether or not it has to be less than 88 units because of impacts that are inherent to the design. That's the way that thing works. That's the way that thing works.
Just to point out, if you, if a cluster subdivision does come back to you, the impact, the development, isn't going to extend beyond here.
Right, it'll be limited.
It's not going to be disturbed, that would all be forever-
That'll all be correct.
I mean, that's, not just-
Do you have a second, or are they might see what the other ones are?
No.
So, and I guess, the one question is, would there be a, an ability to accept, access those lots besides the bridge, or no?
No, not the way it's laid out now, no.
Okay.
Do you have an estimate on the number of steep slopes that would be disturbed as a part of this layout design?
You mean the asset right layout design?
Yes.
Yeah. The board was, in the pre-meeting was discussing Section 240-32B, which discusses steep slopes, and the possibility of a layout that avoids or minimizes. I mean, again, this would all probably make more sense at the time of conventional, should that be the route that we end up going down.
If the town board comes back and says, look, I don't want you to do anything but cookie cutter conventional, I don't want you to do anything other than that, you're not allowed to use your imagination, you're not allowed to cluster this, you're not allowed to have more housing and more open space at the same time, if that's what the town board says, everything you just said is relevant. Because the town board says, we trust you to make something creative for our town that will bring in more housing and save more open space at the same time, because our code as written doesn't do that, and in fact, the way the code is written, it gives you the opportunity to do it, they trust you to do it, then you may come up with a design that doesn't require a bridge.
From what I understand about what you're saying, though, should the town board give the planning board the right to do that, they would have the ability to consider both a conservation and a standard-
Yes.
-and potentially reduce the lot count of both.
They certainly have the ability to do that, there's no, this is an upper limit, it's not-
It does not bind them from reducing that limit in the future-
That's correct.
-should we learn more about the steep slopes being disturbed.
That's absolutely correct.
The majority in this layout, the majority of the steep slopes are being avoided.
They're in the backs of those long-
Yeah.
-properties?
Yeah.
Okay. And the grading, it does look like the grading crosses property lines?
Proposed property lines.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we would put in grading easements, or?
I was just curious, John, what your thoughts on, because I know that in other subdivisions, and I, I know that we're not in a conventional subdivision process at the moment, but in the past, when we have done that, you have strongly discouraged grading lines that cross property lines?
Yeah, to the extent possible, sometimes it's not feasible to do that, so there is the opportunity to, to provide grading easements, and we've, we've seen plans where they've, the municipalities had them do all that mass grading as a first order of business, just so that it's done before lots start getting conveyed. But, yeah, in general, you want to avoid that as much as possible.
Okay.
But there is, there's no hard rule on that, I mean-
No.
I've seen many subdivisions with that.
Okay.
It looks like, the, the last plan we looked at was the 88 lot layout, and you said this is down to 79 now.
This was submitted to, to, yes.
So we haven't seen this?
Okay.
I don't think you have either?
I believe I-
Yeah, I think that was submitted in November, this was, I think you have seen this.
We, we reviewed it for the December 14th-
December meeting, yeah.
Okay, I, I thought the, the plan that I reviewed had the 88 lot layout.
It was 88 lots until we got the wetlands flagged, once the wetlands were flagged, it went down to 80, 79 building lots.
The November 6th document, I have references, there's 79 proposed, they took them parcels.
Okay, okay. I guess I'm just remembering, I must, yeah.
Well, I could say they're well-known with the entire-
We still don't have the actual report on the wetlands yet, right?
So we need to review, my office will need to review the wetland report once we receive it, and we still need the applicant to demonstrate compliance with Section 240-18D2, which is the 10% rule, which will be a lot of arithmetic that we'll need to double-check, but that is the provision of the code that says that no more than 10% of your minimum lot area can be lands encumbered by wetlands, floodplains, water, et cetera.
Are those the only two things that we need now going forward in order to establish a lot count on that, or do we need more?
Well, you've got the representation from the applicant's attorney this evening, we had discussed a different alternative earlier in the pre-meeting, which was, you know, curious to see a revised layout that would eliminate wetland disturbance, or the need for wetland disturbance permitting, and minimizing steep slope disturbance.
Correct.
As the applicant has represented, that can also be done down the line, or we can do that now in the establishment of a lot count.
Well, I, I think one of the issues too, for purposes of SEACER, you know, establishing the amounts of, of steep slope and wetland disturbances-
In this plan too?
Well, I mean, so, so basically, one of the things that you would be doing in, as part of the SEACER process and the obligation of the lead agency is to identify how much deep slopes and how much wetlands are being disturbed, and if possible, minimize those impacts, so.
But that's not, SEACER's not required, that's not one of the requirements of the section of the code.
I'm sorry, no, it's, it's not required to establish a lot count.
Okay.
Okay, and let's, let's just, we'll talk about that. So for purposes of the lot count, since the town, neither the town board nor the planning board is bound by the lot count, it's not, it's a preliminary determination, it's not going to make a determination one way or another how the applicant, how the application would proceed. To my mind, unfortunately, one of the things is in 240-19, it does not say when the SEACER determination should be made.
I would think it would want to make it when you get to a place where your board is comfortable with how it's going to proceed, if your board-
You need this, you gotta get, you gotta speak into the mic.
I'm sorry.
So you get it on the record.
I, I get Jim's point, and it's, it's a good point, but this is a process, I, but here's the issue. Everything just Jim just said is correct, but the point is, it's the timing, when do you do it, right?
And, and-
Since we don't have the town boards yet saying whether or not you have the ability to think a little bit outside the box and change this from what you've seen here to a, a more cluster development that will shrink infrastructure and increase open space, we have to have that decision. Once you have that decision, you'll be able to make a decision how to proceed to, to take care of the values that Jim has identified, that's, that's what we're at.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is that, I, I believe, in my opinion, that the decision of the town board, whether to grant the cluster or not grant the cluster-
They don't grant it, they do, but they-
No, no, well, the authority to do-
Right, gives us, they're, they're giving us the authority at that point.
So if they're not, if they're going to deny the authority, my, based on the SEACER regulations, I think that is a determination that affects the environment, and therefore that determination requires SEACER, a SEACER determination of significance prior to that determination being made.
If they deny it, and say we're strictly conventional, then, then that's what we're going to do.
Right, correct.
So-
All I'm saying, all I'm saying at this point is, if it was a conventional subdivision, and that, that one section, you know, beyond the bridge, you know, wasn't accessible, you know-
Wouldn't work.
Right, so that brings that, at the end of the day, that would technically bring our number down to whatever it is, we'd be to the point of 60, probably 69 units.
But if you are given the ability, and that's the problem, and I'm sorry, it is the problem, you should have been given this ability last year, it's now taken a judge to say, would you guys please, the town board, not you, make a decision on this? If they gave you the ability, we could have an informed conversation, because you'd be doing the maximum lot count in the context of your ability, which is what the statute says they should do, but they haven't done that.
Right, and we would be, right, and then at that point, we, we would be doing everything, going through SEACER and everything else at that point.
Right.
You know, and again, you know, at that point, might determine a number of, you know, a number at 69.
I'm still trying to get a vote out of these guys this month on this, if I get it and they say you have the ability, it'll inform whatever you do next. If I get it and they say they're not going to give you the ability, that will inform whatever we're doing next.
Right, and that's, right, and again, that's on, that's on, you know, that's on their agenda, we have nothing that, right.
You, you guys-
We were asked, we were asked, you know, we're asked to come up with this lot count, I think everybody's been discussing it, I think we've had a lot of, you know, back and forth with this, again, you know, I know the wetlands was a big issue, which is definitely through the statute, you know, we were going over that before, so that definitely does need to be identified with a, you know, with a current report, at least, or a current, you know, verification of the mark out. So we do, we still know we need that, and then again, it's the issue, you know, the only other thing I really see is the issue with the, you know, crossing the wetlands at this point, you know, and then I don't know, I mean, you know, if we're looking at that, are we not looking at that?
It's just 10 lots, by the way, it's 10 lots, except for-
Okay, 10, yeah, it was 9 or 10, I know it was.
So, and I've had this issue on other applications, technically, you know, the bridge is, if the bridge spans the wetlands, it's not considered to be a, you know, you don't need Corps of Engineer approval or DEC appro-
Correct.
So, so, I mean, so for purposes-
But you still have to, right, you still have to disturb the wetland in order to build the bridge anyway, unless you drop it, unless you drop it from the sky with a helicopter, I don't see that.
Well, actually, no, you, you can, I mean, what you do is you, you put the abutments outside of, I mean, what you do is you put the abutments outside of, outside of the, you know, the bed and the banks, and, and then you bring in a crane and you put, you know, the, the span onto the abutment, so that's the way it's-
Who owns the bridge at that point?
What's that?
Who owns and maintains the bridge?
That's, it's really up to the town, I mean, it would be offered, offered for dedication, I mean, under the statute, if you have a subdivision road, it's offered for dedication, and it's, it's at the discretion of the town to accept it.
That's why, that's why I only, that's why I raised the question earlier, again, the highway superintendent hasn't been, to the best of my knowledge, hasn't been, you know, asked for an opinion on this, that's all.
You know, I, you, I want to thank you all, you've worked so hard wrestling with this, and we still don't know where we stand. So I'm going to ask you to do something, I'm just thinking of it now, perhaps not a well-thought-out idea, I'm asking this town board for a year, put this on the agenda, to get a vote from them as to whether or not you're going to be able to exercise some creative powers or just do the cookie cutter, R40 zoning, and a lot of the issues that we're discussing have to do with that.
Correct.
Can you ask them, can you pass a resolution saying we'd appreciate some guidance here? Because we're all wasting our time because you're not giving us the guidance?
It's still, it's in their core, I mean, we've, we've, you know, it's been mentioned to them already, I mean, outside of, you know, outside of the venue, they've been, you know, it's been discussed, you know, you know, individually with, with board members, you know, what are you guys going to do with it, and nobody, nobody has an answer for us either.
Because if they, if they would vote no, then there would be certain things that I would do, and they would vote yes, there would be certain things that you would do, but-
I, I agree, I, I said, yeah.
Because they're not saying anything.
And at the end, at the end of the day, like I said, we give you the number, you're still going to go to them and whether or not it's going to make it, you know, and again, they have their process of getting on the agenda.
Well, I'm going to put some heat on it to try and get in front of that town board.
Basically, the only thing holding something down now is getting the lot count, correct? Right. We don't have the information we need to give them a lot count. You guys have already asked them for that information once and it was ignored, correct?
Well, we, yeah, we haven't gotten the-
Well, we haven't gotten it yet, so basically, we just need the information so that we can vote and see. If we, if we get all, if we, if we get the additional-
If they voted no, we're never going to do that.
Right. So, so the additional, let's, let's discuss, well, what information are we actually looking for? Let's, you know, so we have the bullet points of what we need.
Sure.
And then when those items are submitted to the office complete, then we can go ahead and then put it on the next agenda, and then I believe our goal should be at the next meeting is to come up with a number at the end of the day, and then we can take this off our plate, and it gives the applicant their opportunity to go back to the town board and hash things out. There we go. Okay, is that everybody amenable to that? Yep. Okay.
For me?
So, go ahead.
A corrected version of this letter and the wetland report.
What's the date on that letter, just for the record?
This letter is dated December 5th.
It's a Michael, Ecological Solutions letter, for the record.
Yes, so a corrected Ecological Solutions letter, the wetland report, a, an amended bulk table, subject to, what's that thing?
The 10%.
Yes.
Okay.
And this is up to the board, we discussed this earlier, we can do it after the fact, we can cut these lots off later, or we can ask to see an alternate layout that eliminates the crossing of the wetland, and I think it would be useful for a, to quantify steep slope disturbance.
Okay.
Somewhere on the table, and if you're doing an alternate layout, I would say, you know, what's the steep slope disturbance with this layout, and then get rid of the wetland disturbance, or the wetland crossing, and what's the steep slope disturbance of that layout? John, do you have anything?
No, I think that covers pretty much everything. Can I ask that that would be like submitted in a packet in a timely manner, that we have time to review it?
One, one complete submission?
So again, it would be- Once we get the submission on time, then we could set them- Yeah, but that would, that's what I was asking, I was asking them that submitted, once it's submitted, it's within that cycle for that, for whatever meeting, so, let's say the cutoff date is, you know, whatever, January 30th, you know, and that cutoff, you know, for submission, and then the, the next date for whatever the meeting is, that would be the meeting that would be put on. Yes, as long as the package is complete.
For the record, though, I do submit by the submission date with an entire packet. The reason you didn't get anything new is because the last meeting was not held.
Right, the last meeting was canceled, right, but also too, I think, you know, the, the letter was dated, right, the letter was December 5th, you know, it could have been forwarded to the secretary at any time, and that would have been dispersed to, you know, to staff and the board members.
But yes, you will, you will get a complete packet.
Yeah. I think the, the issue is that when it comes in as separate pieces, it puts additional strain on, on the secretary and how it gets distributed to the board.
Understood.
And so rather than, you know, whenever these things get completed, just get the full list, and that would be the packet.
Okay.
And I think that, I don't know how they said it, again, hopefully, if everything comes all complete, then it gives us a better, you know, option to make a decision at that point in time.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
So with that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll call you on Friday. Please come on Friday.
All right.
What's that?
Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is a conceptual view for the Subin LLC subdivision on the Hackensack Road, what we got going on.
Do I have the ability to present the plan strategically?
Yeah, you want to put them up on the screen, that'd be, that'd be good.
That's my problem. I was like, man. There. There.
this plan?
Did you, did you guys, anybody need a set that didn't get it? Yeah. If you need a, she's got an extra set.
Now we'll land us a score here.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name's Mike Bodendorf with Hudson Land Design Engineers, and I'm joined here tonight with the applicant, Ben Goode, who's sitting back there. We're before your board tonight to present a proposal for a two lot subdivision located on a vacant parcel that fronts on Widmer Road and New Hackensack Road. The existing vacant parcel is 3.1 acres in size, is located on the east side of New Hackensack Road, which is a county road located in this area, and on the west side of Widmer Road, which is a town road. It's mostly wooded, it's within the town's RH20 zoning district, and there's an existing wetland located in the northwest portion of the property. The wetland has been delineated. The applicant wishes to subdivide the property into two residential buildings illustrated here on the screen. This office has conducted an extensive feasibility study on the property with regards to the onsite wetland, onsite drainage patterns, site distance conditions, onsite and offsite wells, and septic systems. The sketch layout is based upon those studies. There's no known water or sewer, or municipal water and sewer in the area, so each residential structure would be served by a well and septic system. We're coming in with a conceptual plan tonight because there are a couple existing conditions that we want the board to consider before we move forward with a full application. And that's the existing wetland on the site and site distance. So I'll just talk briefly about the existing wetland, and then we'll go through site distance. The existing wetland sits in the lowest portion of the site and pretty much collects all the drainage from the site, including some drainage from Widmer Road and a portion of New Hackensack Road. There's an existing 12-inch culvert discharging from Widmer Road, which is located right here.
This is the wetland here.
And the wetland discharges drainage offsite through a 12-inch corrugated metal pipe that crosses New Hackensack Road. The inlet of that outlet pipe is about half filled with sediment, so it's, it's not really draining the wetland too efficiently these days. So it forces that wetland upon a little bit higher than it normally would in its current, original condition. The outlet pipe does eventually drain that wetland, so that wetland does dry out during dry conditions. And it, so in the, in the, the water portion of that wetland where ponds are, there's no vegetation whatsoever. Therefore, it's our opinion that this wetland lacks adversity and hospitality, but considered a high quality wetland. As part of the project, the applicant proposes to remove sediment from the outlet pipe so that it will drain back to its original condition. And this may lower the, the high watermark back to its original height. So the proposed site work for the lots, septic systems, et cetera, will result in disturbance to the town wetland buffer. The Dutchess County Health Department also requires sewage disposal systems to be located 100 feet away from the mean high watermark of a wetland or a water course or, or stream. The mean high watermark is not clearly known at this time, but we believe it generally follows that 170 contour, which is generally in this area here. The eastern portion of the wetland has a lot of, of upland wetland area, and we don't believe that the water level gets that high in normal conditions. So it's expected, and then you can see on the plan that the Lot 2 septic system is impacting the, the town wetland buffer. The wetland, the, the Health Department is likely, or they will require us to fill any mean high watermark that's within 100 feet of that sewage disposal system. So there will likely be an impact to the wetland itself. You know, we've looked at alternative areas on this for the septic system, and you can see there's a lot of surrounding wells, the onsite wells, existing septic systems offsite. That location of the, the septic system on Lot 2 is pretty much where it has to be. We really don't have an alternative there. So if we do have to fill the wetland, which may have to happen, we have identified an area in the northwest corner of the wetland that could provide some mitigation to the wetland in compensation of the filling. The filling of the wetland wait, may require a permit from the Army Corps. We don't know if it'll meet the threshold. It will require a permit from the town. The second issue I'd like to discuss is site distance. We're proposing to access both lots from Widmer Road. And you can see from the plan that they sit on an inside curve of Widmer Road, which is not the perfect situation for site distance. We can provide adequate site distance by performing mitigation on the site by cutting a knoll down on Lot 2, as shown by the grading here. The app will also have shown on the plans that, via profiles, that the site distance can be achieved by onsite mitigation. There is no offsite mitigation that's required for the site distance to be achieved. The removal of the knoll on proposed Lot 2 will also open up stopping site distance for users of the road coming around that corner towards the stop sign at New Hackensack Road. And I just want to note that stopping site distance when approaching from the north to both driveways is adequate without any mitigation, but obviously clearing and grading will, will improve that condition as well. We will need to propose a site distance easement over both lots so that, you know, it will just prohibit any kind of structures or tall shrubs or vegetation in those areas. Lastly, the town culvert, we don't believe there's any kind of easement going through the site. And what it does now is it very inefficiently travels through the center of the site, sort of through here, through this very flat area. So what we're going to do as part of the proposed plan is we're going to provide a channel through the site so that it can officially move through the site, get to the wetland, and, and make these lots viable. We would also provide the town with an easement for that drainage. You'll see on Lot 1 that it's sort of a reverse flag lot where we have the 50-foot flag pole going out to New Hackensack Road. And the reason for that is we would like to keep that drainage and easement on one lot. We don't want to have any cross meet easements over two lots. So although we're not gaining access through that flag pole, it would provide the drainage to be totally contained on Lot 1, so there wouldn't be any cross easements required. So we've done a, an extensive amount of work on this for a sketch plan, but it was necessary to really determine if we could actually get two lots out of here. You know, the zoning only requires 20,000 square feet per lot, we're only asking for one extra lot. Both lots are about a little bit over an acre and a half, and we just wanted to run this by you, the board, see if there's any showstoppers that you may see before we, you know, move forward with a full application.
Okay. Just one, one thing I just want to clarify, when you were speaking earlier, and I might have heard you wrong, but there's no impact, you're not doing anything within the wetland itself, it's just the wetland buffer you're going to encroach.
Yes, but we may have to fill some area within that wetland if the Health Department determines that there could be water in that area.
But you're going to compensate it on the other side.
But we can provide compensation on the other side of the wetland.
I have a question. And we can take a look at Dutchess County Parcel Access, but is it Army Corps wetland? What does it drain to across Hackensack? Much larger, more significant wetland?
You know, I'm not sure if it's Army Corps or DEC on the other side.
Can you take a look, Jim? Because we ran into the same issue with U-Haul. It's a small, relatively insignificant wetland. We were looking at disturbance to the wetland and the wetland buffer, but it drained across the street to a much, much longer.
Into a much larger, right, into the Greenfly Swamp.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, I'm blanking on the provision of the code, but do you know what area of Lot 2 in square feet is not wetland or wetland buffer? If you subtract out the wetland and the wetland buffer, because in order to make minimum lot count, you're going to need, the requirement's 20. So you're going to need 18,000 square feet of area in order to make minimum lot count, because only 10% of your minimum lot can be wetland or wetland.
Okay. I, I don't know that offhand, but I've got a figure that, you know, it's an acre and a half.
There's nothing across the street.
It looks like half that property on Lot 2 is in the buffer.
Yeah, there, there's no wetlands across the street.
Okay. That property is so.
All right, we're, okay, we're not, it's, it's not open to public comment right now, okay? We're just having a conversation. It's not even a full submission at this point, okay?
It doesn't drain into anything?
No, not, it doesn't, it's, it's not shown. I, I, it probably drains into a drainage ditch, I would think.
There is a drainage ditch on the other side of the road, I just.
You know, because it goes to, so this property is just south of Woodhill, Woodhill Green, on the opposite side of New Hackensack. At this point, New Hackensack is running all the way south.
Going towards, going towards the village.
So the two properties that are, are directly opposite on the west side are owned by Reddell Real Estate, and they back up on the, they back up on the self-storage facility that's on Route 9.
Okay.
But I'm not, you know, ultimately, you know, that, whatever the drainage would most likely go through Woodhill Green and somehow get to the lake, but, I mean, in looking at a terrain, let's see the terrain, I mean, I think Woodhill is, is higher, so.
My biggest concern with it would be flooding issues. It's clearly a wet parcel. It's currently wooded, but it looks like everything that is not the wetland itself, including significant portions of the wetland buffer, would need to be cleared and graded extensively. The drainage pipe that goes across New Hackensack Road, you said, has already filled in largely with sedimentation, you'll have to empty that, and I'm sure that the grading and the cutting will lead to further sedimentation, so if, I mean, that's.
Potential if you don't control it.
Sure, but, you know, it's, it's going to fill in again, is my concern, and.
Well, it's not going to fill in from the site. It might fill in from your town culvert if you're letting sediment get in there, but proper erosion control, proper grading, proper stabilization, how is it going to fill in with sediment from the site?
Okay.
I get it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's certainly something that, you know, you could write into a resolution where it has to be maintained and, and.
Sure.
You know, part of the drainage easement could be part of that.
I see the, basically the leach field for Lot 2 is, is in the wetland buffer.
It is.
The whole thing, yeah.
You're saying that you would have to add fill to the wetland?
To the water portion of the wetland. It wouldn't necessarily mean the upland part of the wetland.
These elevations we're showing here are proposed fill for that, right?
Oh, for the septic system, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
For the septic, it is.
Yeah, we've done soil tests out there.
You're looking at 10 foot.
So those septic systems are, I would say they're about 80% designed. I have, you know, because of all the wells around the site, I did run this by Dan Keeler at the Health Department just to make sure he didn't see anything jumping off the page at him, and, and he seemed to be okay with it, particularly that well directly across the street from Lot 2. You know, we were a little concerned on that, but.
Is your plan to bring fill in, or is this like a cotton fill, or?
I'm sorry?
Is this, are we, is your plan to bring all this fill in, or is this a cotton fill check?
It's, it's a cotton fill. I haven't run the numbers on that yet.
Yeah, so I see elevations in there.
If, you know, it, there's, there's a, a fair amount of cut on, on the frontage of Lot 2, but that would be pushed down where we need the fill beyond the house. The septic systems need quality fill, so that would be imported. We're not going to get that from the site. And then if, you know, if we're going to do any mitigation on that wetland, that would also provide some fill that we might need. But generally, Lot 2 needs more fill than Lot 1. Lot 1 is more of just a grading exercise and a fill pad for a septic system.
So in, in looking at Parcel Access, on the opposite side, Woodhill Green is at a higher elevation, it's at least at 175. This, the bulk of this property, this property is in a bit of a low lying area. To the east, it, it goes back up toward Widmer Road, and in looking at the way it drains on the opposite side, it would, it looks like it drains down toward the Altough Music Site. And, you know, I mean, there's no, it doesn't show any, any particular water course per se.
It's, it's basically, it's going down just.
It's going, it's, it looks like the drainage is going across, right, down to Route 9.
Right, down to Route 9.
Down into the, down into the stormwater management system on Route 9.
Right, it's probably getting caught into, into the state's, state system, and then eventually making it to the grid.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So with, so with the mitigation of the well, is you think that's feasible?
It's hard to say because we don't know whether or not they're going to need to fill in the wetland or what the wetland mitigation would look like.
I thought you said you're going to need to fill in the wetland a little bit, didn't you?
They're going to fill the wetland a lot.
Yeah.
Not a little. Actually, the wetland buffer, not the wetland.
He's saying he may also, depending on what the Health Department says, he may also need to fill the, the wet part of the wetland.
And then, yeah.
The water part.
So you're filling in the buffer, and then you're filling possibly part of the wetland, so then the displacing of all that, where, where would it go, the water?
To that pipe. Yeah, it'll basically go north on the property to the pipe, but under the.
And then out, under and then out.
Yeah, and if it's, you know, if it's the board wish, we could provide the mitigation to compensate an equal amount of what we fill on the other side of the wetland.
Right.
So, so right now, Parcel Access is showing a core wetland, which is, I mean, there's some question as to whether or not it's considered isolated. But, you know, on the map, it shows that it's under Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction, so as you said, you may or may not need a permit. You know, is it more than 10th of an acre?
You know, I'll have to figure that out. I don't think it is. The wetland, the total wetland area there is about 20,000 square feet.
What about this house that stays, right?
It's going to be more than 4,500, 4,200 square feet.
It's not part of it.
I'll, I'll have to.
So just, just so the board is, the, the board is aware, the US Army Corps of Engineers does not have any buffer requirements. Their regulations only pertain to the disturbance within the wetland. New York State DEC has a buff, has a 100-foot buffer for their wetlands, but this, the DEC wetlands are larger, they're approximately, in order to qualify, you need to have a wetland of, I believe it's 11.3 acres, for whatever reason, it's measured in hectares, but it's about 11.3 acres to create a DEC jurisdictional wetland. The Corps of Engineer wetlands can go down to small sizes, which in fact this is. So one of the things is that if there is fill in this wetland, assuming that the Corps of Engineers recognizes is that it, as a wetland, they would need either a, what's called a nationwide permit from the Corps of Engineers, which is typically, it's less than a 10th of an acre, I believe, for the nationwide for a fill. And if it's greater than that level, then they need a more substantial permit. But, so with respect to, if there's filling of this wetland itself, and the Corps of Engineers determines there is jurisdiction, then they, you know, they would have to issue a permit for the filling of the wetland, not, the permit to disturb the buffer would be from this board.
Well, from the, right, under the.
Our, our buffer is set.
Right.
Off of the delineated wetland.
Yeah, correct.
So.
So, yeah, so I mean, it comes basically down to, it's, I guess it's, you have to weigh out your options, whether or not it's, you know, an Army Corps of Engineer wetland or what, you know, what, or if they're going to require something. if they're gonna require something.
And I'm not, John, would you know, if there was a filling of the wetland, would they require mitigation, I mean, it's typically two to one, right?
The Corps?
Yeah.
That, I have seen that in the past, I'm not sure if that's.
I don't know if that's the standard.
Yeah.
It depends on the wetland.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on, right, the viability of the wetland, that if it's.
Obviously, if it's less than a tenth, then they probably wouldn't require mitigation.
Okay, and just the, I guess, with filling the wetland, it's because of the distance from the, from the septic system itself?
Yeah, and I just need verification from the Health Department where that distance comes from, because it is a fill pad, sometimes they make you take it from top of fill pad, toe of fill pad, laterals, that's where the gray area is right now, and I just need to hone in on that.
Yeah, and what?
Because it, you know, that water level is much further away than the actual wetland edge, you know, there's, there's a good, fair amount of upland wetland in that wetland, and that's where all the vegetation is. We wouldn't necessarily have to fill that portion, because it's not inundated with water all the time, so it may only be a portion of the lowest part that we have to fill.
Well, once all this fill is put in there, that's gonna change the amount of water that that wetland is taking on.
Oh, yeah, it'll decrease the amount of volume it can hold, that's why we could, you know, if, if it's the board's wish, or the Army Corps' wish, we could provide the.
He's saying it would decrease, because they're also going to be draining.
Because they fixed the pipe and blah, blah, blah.
And so it would drain better, but I think that it would increase.
I think that we have an increase, the flow in there, because of all the fill on the backside.
Based on the grading, it looks like this is relatively flat along the road, and it descends down towards the wetland.
Okay.
And they would be raising up where you see the.
Yeah, the three.
The house on lot two, and the two septics, and so you'd raise that up, and you'd increase the water, or decrease the space that that water has to drain down into the wetland. Is there existing water issues in the front of this property, flooding?
In the front, meaning along the road frontage?
Well, where the proposed building paths are, I mean, it's, it's a wet area.
Well, currently, the drainage moves very slowly through that flat area just below the houses, and it probably does pond up during these crazy storms we've been getting. So that's the reason why we would, you know, create that channel, to keep at least the road drainage confined to the channel, and then, you know, the site drainage will be able to move through there, I can, you know, provide more grading to help it move out of that flat area between the channel and the septic systems, just to kinda, you know, because it's just so flat right now, there's a lot of forest litter in there that's blocking drainage as well, which, you know, causes it to temporarily pond up in there as well, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of site improvements that can be done to improve the overall drainage of the site.
Marco, is your concern that with, with the fill going in, that with more, there'll be more volume of water there, that it'll be raised, the water level will be higher than the pipe?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, but.
That's what I was thinking, too.
If you look close, I mean, you got one, you only got twenty-five feet of pitch right now on that whole backside lot, is what it looks like from the elevations that are on this.
I would assume if you have sediment buildup in that pipe, the water level's already getting high.
It's already gonna be high, it's supposed to be.
If you're filling, and I'm not, I'm not an expert wetland, but if you're filling part of the wetland in, and I know you have something planned, it's a small amount of space for water to continue to go, the level is gonna be higher than what it is now, even with the sediment cleared out, I guess the question is, how much of that pipe's gonna, are we gonna be like maxing out the, that pipe, where the water starts to overflow over the road, or?
If you create flooding issues at the other end of that pipe?
Right.
And then what happens if, you know, tree trunks and stuff gets, you know, it's higher.
It's gonna fill in.
It's gonna fill faster than who's gonna maintain that, and how often?
That's my concern.
I, I know the wetlands I see throughout Wapins, is this weird level of like, they're nothing, and then like, two, three days later, you're like, wow, like, they're, they're high, and it's, it's generally the same thing, whether it's there, or on Myers, or Old Hopewell, they go up and down, up and down very quickly, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Could you just explain, I, I, looking at the map, I kinda see the, some of the limitations, but why the septic is not closer to Widmer Road and the house behind it?
Which lot are you talking about?
Lot two.
You have the.
You've got a well back there, too.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more.
Separation.
We could push our well for lot two closer to the road, slightly, not too much, you know, the Health Department generally requires you to be fifteen feet off the road minimum, or a lot line, they may allow it to be a little bit closer, just because that's a lot line with a right-of-way and not another residential parcel, so it could be moved up the hill slightly to lessen the impact to the wetland, but, and perhaps that proposed well on lot two could even move towards the south a little bit, and that might help the situation as well.
I mean, I, you know, the, kinda the closer you move, the wet, the septic up to Widmer Road, I think.
Yeah.
You would reduce.
Well, if there's, yeah, I mean, obviously, I mean, if you look at it, just, you know, without knowing anything, and you wanna just, if you just shifted everything forward, because you do, you know, room to move forward to some degree, or, you know, move things around, you might be able to make it work a little better, but, you know, the house might be closer to the road, you know, the septic system maybe, you know, moved over a little bit, I mean, it could be shifted around, I don't know if that's an option, too.
I mean, even if you.
Even to do that, or, again, even to do that to lessen, to even further lessen the impact into the buffer, yeah.
I mean, the other option would be to kinda move the house, you know, turn the house so that the short end is toward Widmer Road.
I was wondering, what about like, putting the driveway on the other side of it, and then scooting the house over and?
I think it's a visibility sign of this here.
Well, it's a straightaway, isn't it? Pass around that bend, doesn't it straighten out there?
Not sure.
So if you take the driveway and put it on the other side of the house, and scoop the house over a little bit, then where that block of that driveway is could potentially be a, and I, and I don't know, I don't know the site, so I don't know what limitations you have, but then if you, if you move the septic system back in that kind of, you know, spot where that driveway is.
The triangular area, that's sort of.
Yeah, that you would have a lesser impact on both the buffer and the, and the wetland.
I mean, we could certainly explore that, I don't know if we did any soil tests in that general area there, I mean, the soil tests were pretty consistent through there, so that, that's, it's possible.
I mean, the buffer, I mean, the buffer is one thing, I mean, if the more you could, if you could stay out of the wetland itself, I mean, I, you know, I feel more comfortable with that, than what everybody else feels, but.
Yep.
You know, but impacting, impacting the actual wetland, you know, it becomes, it becomes a little tricky, that's all, yeah.
So just a hypothetical, we do everything we can to stay out of that wetland and filling it, if we have to fill a portion of it, does mitigation help?
Mitigation, we're talking about one for one?
Probably, I mean, we could do as much as we can, I don't know if we'll get a two for one there.
Okay, well, you're at least gonna, you'd at least be able to get one for one, though?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, I don't know how everybody feels about that, it's just the option, where if they, if they do fill in a piece of the actual wet area, they're gonna, they're gonna create outside of the wetland area, a new wetland area.
Yeah.
So, you know, to simulate what they've taken away.
Yeah.
So it'd be one for one, sometimes the people will ask for more than that, but, you know, if they can at least get one for one, if not, maybe a little bit more, how's everybody's feeling on that, that scenario?
What were the potential locations for the compensation?
Like you're.
We're going towards New Hackensack.
Talking down.
We take this little knot out right here, the area over there.
My, my only concern with that is that it would move, it would bump the wetland buffer, which assists in drainage, onto the road, right? It's not additional forested area, it's just moving the wetland closer to the road, and I don't know what that would do in terms of the drainage off of that road, but you don't have the wetland buffer, which assists in the drainage of, the drainage and the function of drainage of that wetland.
Yeah, for water quality.
The mitigation in that area would.
I don't know, I just get kinda scared when I see all that fill going in and building stuff on top of a marsh, basically.
Yeah.
In twenty years, that house sinks three feet.
And it floods every time it rains, you know?
Yep. That's what I see every time something like that happens.
And there's nothing shown in this area, it's a flood hazard area, right? Nothing, okay, making sure. John, what do you think, being the engineer?
Well, everything floods now, right? You know. I, I, I wanna reserve comment until I can go take a look for myself, I mean, I'm not a wetland expert, but it looks like a pretty small, isolated wetland. If the Health Department allows you to fill, to create the necessary separation, it would be a question of how much is that, do they need an individual permit from the Corps?
Obviously, they would need one from the town, but it may be in their best interest to, to look at trying to maneuver stuff on that lot to, to get further away, so that some of those questions go away, but.
Yes, maybe one of those things we go out and take a look at when they get a little better plan together, or whatever.
Okay, well, I guess at this point, I may, I guess you have a little homework ahead of ya, kinda make the decision, at least you have the input, and it sounds like, it sounds like everybody's trying to keep everything, anything that's gonna happen within the buffer, and not in the wetland itself, so I guess if you can finagle that around, that would probably be the best option, and then beyond that is, you know, if, if even with moving it around, you have, you know, something small, I mean, that would be the, you know, your choice to bring back, and then we can discuss further, and again, that would then, you know, you know, if that's proposed, then we would have to go out and take a look at it, obviously, we'd have to get somebody to review it, the, the impact to the well, so I'm assuming, I don't know if you're, Malcolm, if your office still has somebody
Yeah.
to, to review that portion of it.
Yeah, we can take a look at a wetland before.
Okay.
But that, that's only gonna happen if we make a full application, right? Because.
If you make, if you make a full application, right, we're only, we're only talking theoretical this day, and you're, yeah, like, again, you have to figure out what you wanna do to make this work, and again, it's, you know, and that becomes dollars and cents at the end of the day, too.
I was kinda hoping to get that information tonight before we make the full application, so that, you know, if this thing falls apart, you know, my client doesn't spend all that money on the application fees and everything.
Right, right, yeah, but I mean, at least it gives a, you know, at that point, at least you know from our perspective where you're going, you know, then you could have that, you know, you can have that discussion with the client.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, you can definitely get, you know, without any issue, it looks like you can definitely get one lot out of this.
Oh, it already is one lot.
Right, oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, there is, yeah, no, I'm just looking at it, yeah, sorry, I'm just thinking about the, how is the other piece that's carved out in the Hackensack, I thought that was part, that's, that's what I was thinking, but no, obviously it's not, but, yeah, so I mean, it's basically, I have to look at it and see whether or not, you know, it'll work, and again, it's the, you know, it's the wetland issue, unfortunately, you know, these properties become more and more difficult to deal with, and, you know, again, it's, it's in the public eye more recently because of all the rains, you know, everything that, you know, everything that never, you know, never flooded before, held water before, is holding water today, you know, and that's, I imagine, you know, that would be part of the public hearing process, you'd have to.
It's making our job a bit challenging these days.
Yes, yes, it is. So, anybody else have anything, any board members have anything to add?
Nope.
John, eh?
No.
No? Okay, so, I think you, I think you got some input from us, and, yeah, gives you at least a little more, you know, of an idea of which way to go. All right. All right. So our next item on the agenda is the Chelsea Farms subdivision extension.
What the heck is going on down there, huh? What the heck is going on down there?
Well, I know there's, I know there's been a lot of chatter from the neighborhood, I know you're, you're closer to it than I am, but I've gotten a bunch of people, but this evening, we have, we have the attorney for the, for the developer, and I believe you did send us something tonight, actually, earlier today, sent us a, basically, I guess, a where we stand with everything, so.
Yes, George Lithgow.
Identify yourself, yep, and.
And I'm here on behalf of Chelsea Farms. Unfortunately, Dan Kohler couldn't attend the meeting tonight, he has been to the site, he's more familiar with the current conditions, he has indicated the area that was disturbed pursuant to your authorization last year, has been largely, not restored, but cleared and mulched, and is pretty stable, and I understand that Walter was there last year. So, we know that's of concern to the neighborhood, and I want to explain the reason how that came to be as part of the presentation. So basically, I'm here at the, I came in at the middle, and I've been working with the property owner and Dan over the last three years to get the conditions complied with, there are a number of conditions that, I think it's an eight-page resolution, that started, actually, the previous attorney, Richard Cantor, started doing some of that work back in seventeen, eighteen, and for various reasons, it was delayed, and then COVID came, and then things sort of really slowed down. So, since twenty, twenty twenty, we've been working through the process of getting the maps finalized, and I believe this is probably the most accurate dimensioned subdivision that you have seen in some time, it took nearly six, I think, six or seven months to work through with the original surveyor with his firm that acquired his practice with the town engineer, with Dan, to get the plan in final form. So it is a very large property, it's a very small number of lots, considering what you've heard tonight, seventeen lots on a hundred and eighty-six acres, there is a, and I'm happy to tell you, there is not gonna be any wetland fill, there is going to be, there are wetlands present on the property, there are town wetlands with a hundred-foot buffer round, but those are going to be subject to a conservation easement, so that conservation easement has been vetted by the Fish and Wildlife Service, it's been finalized, it's been submitted to your attorney for review, it is covering essentially the middle of the property, most of the lots are on the upper, I think that would be the east side, there are a couple of lots along the frontage on North Street, and that is the way it was developed over, I think, five years of review, it was approved in twenty sixteen, and for the reasons, for various reasons, it's continued forward, you were listening to something before that's brand new, this is pretty old, but it is what, what the board has approved over the course of an extensive review, I think the protection that's put into place for the environmentally sensitive areas have been addressed, and on that checklist, I was going to run down the checklist and tell you all the things that have been done, but it's easier to tell you, the only two items that have not been done, two A and two D. So, we have been working, we have been working diligently, the real problem that we've faced since COVID is the uncertainty in the market, Tom Cervone is the realtor, he has been, last year he had twenty-five people who expressed interest. Tom Cervone is the realtor, he has been, last year he had 25 people who expressed interest. They're interested to come look at the property. One of the reasons that the clearing took place is that, as you know, there's a bat restriction that reduces your ability to, eliminate your ability to clear during the summer season when trees may be used for roosting bats. So the notion was to clear that out and to give some, some contractor, some developer the ability to come in and actually start work during the summer so it can be done quickly and efficiently and that got interest, but it only was interesting up to the point where we found out the bond amount, which I think is over a million dollars for 17 lots. So it's a hard nut to swallow, it's a hard nut when the interest rates are going up, it's hard when the, when there's this degree of uncertainty in the market. I spoke to Tom before I came to this meeting and he is, I don't want to say optimistic, but he is cautiously expressing the sense that there may be some break with the prospect of reduced rates, there may be more interest, we may be able to do something this year or beginning of next year. So with that context, what we're here for tonight is the extension.
So I guess that the current owner, his, is basically, is what he's looking to do is just sell the property? He's looking to sell it with the subdivision semi-approved?
Yes. He, he has considered developing it, he has had the same problem as a potential buyer. It's just very hard to justify the economics of it, given the uncertainty.
Okay, all right, I mean, that's, I mean, that's where they stand right now, I guess it's the.
My problem is they started clearing that, it looks like hell now.
Right, right, and we, right, and it was under a false pretense.
Yeah, and it's also eight years, you know, when is enough enough? Usually, at that five-year mark is when you kind of put the clip on that, right?
Five years for preliminary, there is no end unless you say so on a final.
Okay.
Can I just clarify, there was no false pretense, the owner has during the last.
The tree clearing, yes, the tree clearing was under because the developer was supposed to be doing, taking the trees down so they could start work over the summer to meet the, the Indiana bat deadline, you know, so they wanted to have the trees down before April 1st, you know, because they were going to be starting work before October 31st.
And that's the.
Nothing, nothing came of the project, you know, so nothing's moved forward since. It was, they took the trees down, they farmed whatever trees out of it and, you know, if the property sits there now, you know, cleared to some degree, even though everything's starting to go, everything's going to start growing back, I guess all the weed trees will grow back again, but, just, you know, is everybody wants to know why, you know, I guess, you know, is there going to be, is there like a timeframe that this will get done? Or is it just, we're going to wait on the economy and hope for the best?
We're not seeing much purpose to investing a million dollars to create a road that's going to be there for.
Yeah.
Three or four years, I mean, that doesn't.
The million, the million-dollar roads today, let's say, you know, in five years from now, could be a million and a quarter, or they can be.
Ain't going to go down.
Right, they could be whatever at that point. So it's the investment, you know, if they put the investment in today, you know, then they can kind of, that's that much less that they have to put up for bond, you know, for finishing the road at the end of the project. And it also gives them the ability to sell lots and then if they wanted to sell lots off, they can do that and then individual people can build on the lots, correct?
Well, you can be sure they do want to sell lots, but what they're not hearing is that those lots will be sold. And what that means is you're going to have a road that's going to be there for two, three years in some degree of improvement and over time it weathers. It's not going to have the final course on. So it's, it's a difficult situation.
Yeah.
If there's something we can do to alleviate the visual impact, you know, generally would work if you want that.
Put the trees back up, I mean, I think that would make the neighbors happy.
The rate things are going, they would.
It's easier said than done, but I said, I know I've had a few people grab me on that one, that just, you know, again, it's just with the clearing. So I mean, so I mean, really, we're talking, there's really no timeline then, I guess, so this is going to keep coming back every, you know, every six months or so for, for renewal or for an extension, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it, I mean, just the market changes.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's a minimum of six months or, you know, we can give two, you know, two six-month extensions, you know, we've been discussing that, because again, that's, that's what the statute, right?
So, so for purposes of our code and for the section, so it's under 217-13 and it says the original conditional approval of a final plat shall expire within 180 days after the date of the resolution granting approval. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the planning board may extend for periods of 90 days each, the time in which a conditionally approved plat must be submitted for, for signature if the planning board's opinion such extension is warranted by the particular circumstances and that's consistent with Town Law 276. So there are periods of, the extensions are periods of 90 days each.
Of 90 days.
And if you wish, we will certainly come, well, we'll certainly come back, but if we, when we come back, we'll report on what's being done. I mean, this is not a situation the applicant wants to continue, they want to work through whatever process they can and develop the property.
I think, again, we're just, you know, we're trying to just see some momentum, I mean, it's even with the, the items being completed, the work and, again, you said this was done in 2017, so we're, you know, seven years into it already since we approved it originally?
We, yes, you're, seven years in.
I was going to say, I was going to say, I think, I don't, I don't know, Marco, were you on the board when this got approved or?
No.
Is this just prior, right?
Just prior.
Yeah, so I, I remember when it was approved, I think I was just getting on the board at that time, you know, and for it to go on this long, it just, it's, I, I know where, I know where the neighbors' concerns are.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, but the, but the answer is the timeframe, you haven't, you don't know what the timeframe is going to be, because it's based, everything is based, you're basing everything upon the economy.
It's like when you put money into your 401K.
Because we missed, because you missed the window, more or less.
Well, you know, one of the reasons we missed is because of the difficulty in getting all these things closed.
Yeah.
It took six months going through the process because of COVID.
So, I mean, at this point, I don't tell you, I mean, let's, I mean, if the board has anything, I mean, they're asking for, I mean, I think everybody's amenable to making a, you know, to, to offering an extension at this point. Is a year, is a year or two long?
Yes.
Do we want to do, I mean, obviously, we know that the 90-day windows are what we're talking about, does everybody amenable to doing two 90-day extensions?
Well, can't we just give them 90 days and?
And see if there's any progress.
This is completed or that the other remaining items on that, on that list get completed by then or no more extensions?
Well, I believe the only outstanding items is basically posting the bond.
Okay.
Posting the bond.
The bonds required prior to, refresh my memory here because it's different in other places, are the bonds required to be posted prior to final signature once this is approved? Okay. For the roadway, so it's not.
And there's also the recreation fees.
And everything else.
That has to be posted and road escrow and post-planning.
So all the documents and all the easements and everything else.
Everything's all got to be.
They've all been approved, you know, Mr. Lithgow and I have gone over those documents.
I mean, it's been, it's been in progress for quite a while, I mean, I would say this has got to be pretty close to, pretty close to completion.
Give them 90 days to complete everything that, that needs to be completed or, you know, then it runs out and we start all over. You know, seven years is enough.
So just so the board is aware, with respect to starting over, so the seeker process would be, the seeker, the prior seeker determination is still valid.
Just the seeker determination.
The seeker determination is valid.
If there's.
The zoning on this property has not changed.
Right, but then if there's any changes regarding any of the, you know, the DEC requirements, you know, having to do with SWIP, they'd all have to be updated, you know.
Right.
And any other, you know, and then theoretically, any other change that may take place.
Yeah.
So if there was a, if there was a zoning change on a property, if there was, you know, anything like that, that would all have to be, you know, addressed as well.
Or if the, yeah.
Right, I don't, I have no, I have no idea whether or not the town board is entertaining any changes.
Not at this time.
But, you know, again, right, but I'm just saying, if for some reason, this goes on for a period of time, but you're saying, but Jim, you're saying that the seeker determination will stay valid for.
Yes.
A period of. For how long, though?
I had a case where it was valid, Judge Rosa determined it was valid for 25 years.
Okay.
So.
So it's not like they're starting, it's not like they're starting from zero.
Yeah, I mean.
And it could be, and it could be, you know, reapproving the same exact plan.
Yeah, or we made all different changes.
Correct, I mean, you know.
And all the other conditions and everything else may be, you know, may still, you know, may still apply at that same time and they may be, you know, at this point, you know, 75% completed, so they're already there, you know, it'd just be that little bit to finish it off if they had to reapply again.
Well, I, I mean, like I said, I mean, the only, the only issue, if, if, I would suspect that if an application came back, it would probably consider a less, a less infrastructure-intensive application to reduce some of the costs associated with the project. But, you know, I, I know we had had discussions, I had discussions with Mr. Lithgow and with the, the property owner regarding, you know, using securities as, one of the things that New York Town Law provides is that you can use treasury bonds as security for the project, you know, and things of that nature, because that was one of the things.
I think, I think it falls back to, I think the applicant, you know, has to make the decision of where they're going, but if it's definitely there, if they're using this process to stall it just to find a buyer, why is it, why is that our, why is that our issue?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing is that, you know, if, if you deny the application, if you deny the extension and they come back, then you're going to have to process the application.
I mean, there's plenty of other subdivisions that, you know, that are out there, you know, that are, you know, that, you know, people have subdivided them, whatever they had to do to get to that point, you know, and then they've sat on them or did whatever they had to do because they were, you know, they were waiting for that, you know, that right sweet spot in the market to kind of, you know, put it out there and I, and, you know, they're incurring the costs.
I mean, and one of the things is.
Right, this is not the case here, they're not incurring the cost, you know, that others have done in the past and it just, this keeps going on and we've gone in a seven-year cycle pretty much.
So, so, I mean, one of the, I, I do agree that it's appropriate to give them a 90-day extension because one of the things that the applicant, you know, the property owner can then determine is, the property owner could post the bond and, you know, file the plat and then not develop the lots.
Well, what we got right now is we got no bond and we got a couple acres over there that are basically destroyed and we got no way to put it back together.
Well, what I'm saying is if the plat is filed, then, you know, they get the lots and there's still no guarantee that they.
So let's, so let's.
Unfortunately, there's no guarantee that.
Let's rewind back to March, okay?
Right.
So March, we were, we were put on the spot, okay, to approve the tree cutting, okay, without the SWIP, which I believe the town code, the town code says you have to have a, a SWIP in place, that was the question, oh, Jim, that was the question, and we went around and around circles with it because there was others that had to provide it and now you had, now you have this one and some others that didn't have to, you know, I mean, we're, we're inconsistent with how we're improving things, same as, same as with the extensions when it got brought up about, is it, is it a, is it a six-month window? Is it a one-year window? Is it a, you know, we should be consistent with the way the town code reads, you know, that way in case, you know, and again, it all comes back to whether or not somebody challenges something at the end of the day legally, you know, and that, that's the only reason we bring it up is because you want to have, you want to have proper, you know, as you keep saying, is you want to have the proper items within the documents, within the record.
Right.
So that if there is a challenge, it's in the record, okay, no, no, we did it the right way and they're not challenging it otherwise. That's, that's what I think everybody's trying to bring up here, too, but it's, again, we were put on the spot to make a decision in March, let them cut down the trees because they wanted to start, they wanted to start work within that window of time and that didn't happen, so, you know, I think that we have a, we have a, you know, we have a status right now of where we are, correct? Where, where, you know, this is where they are today, all right, and they're saying that all these things are done. If we do give, let's say, we do give an extension at this point, you know, at what point, you know, are they going to come back, you know, and say, all right, we've, we've made this much more progress?
Right.
You know, and then we can make a decision at that point.
Yeah, I, I.
That's, I think, I think that's where we are today.
Yeah, I believe this, like I said, the last I looked at this, I believe the only outstanding items were, you know, the, the bond and the, the payment of the fees at the time of the plat signing. I believe the SWIP had been previously approved, we'll have to go back and look at that.
But all the, all the, the other items, the maintenance agreements, things like that, they've all been.
They've all been done, that, all the easements.
They've all been reviewed.
All the easements have been reviewed, the meets and bounds description for the highway have been reviewed, all the easements have been reviewed, yeah, they've all been, so, and Mr. Lithgow provided a book.
I'm just kidding, yeah.
That SWIP is definitely done?
I believe, I believe it is because there is a drainage.
Okay, okay, so, you know, that's, I mean, these are the things that we were, you know.
Give them 90 days to button up the rest of the stuff, get the bonds in and we're good to go and if not, we're not.
Point of information?
So let me just, let me just go back to this because we are, just in terms of when this expired, because this was in front of us at the last meeting, but it didn't, we didn't act on it.
So this expires this month on the 29th.
So it does, on the 29th, I see that.
So if you give them 90 days, it's April 28th.
So if we want to do, I mean, again, it's a 90-day extension from, from January, is that, is that what you're proposing from the 29th? Which would then put them to, you know, March roughly, you know, the end of March.
90 days is April 28th.
It'd be April 29th.
Sorry, April.
April 28th.
Or 28th, sorry.
Accounted for.
Correct.
Can I also ask, whatever that document is that you sent to Bruce, get sent to the secretary for the record?
I did give it to the secretary after the meeting, but I have more copies.
This wasn't sent over earlier? I thought, I thought it was.
That's the same document that was emailed, I had.
Right, it was email that was sent to me, right.
Yes, I, I had it at the December.
Yeah, it was presented at the December meeting.
Which was, this was?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't have a meeting, we didn't have a meeting in December.
This was, this, this letter was presented for the.
I brought it to the December 5th meeting and since you didn't meet, I gave it to the secretary.
You gave the letter or the, or this document?
The summary.
The summary, was given back in December?
Yes.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember seeing it, that's why.
Well, that's because.
I did see it, I did see it today, that's, you know, again, I did see.
Well, we have it now, so.
Right, yeah, all right. All right, so with that, what's everybody's, what's everybody's pleasure with this? I know Marco, Marco's made a suggestion for 90 days, do we hear anything else?
I agree with Marco.
I agree.
Okay, so, so at this point, if nobody offers any other, entertain a motion to extend it for a 90-day extension, which will bring it out into April and we can see where things stand at that point. Okay, so if that's what you're offering, you want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion for 90 days.
Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good day. Okay, on to our next item, which is Myers Run LLC subdivision seeking their six, their third six-month extension on final subdivision. Obviously, this one has kind of already been out there for a little bit because their extension had run out on October the 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Hold on, I'm just going back here, yes, it was, we're carrying, yes, so October the 3rd was the last?
No, September 1st, it had expired and in December's meeting, we were asking it to be retroactively approved from September 1st.
Back to September.
To this March 1st, which is one meeting.
Right, okay, sorry, I got it, I'm on the wrong, I'm just reading the summaries. Right, okay, sorry, I got it, I'm on the wrong, I'm just reading the summaries down below. So the summary, okay, so we're at September, September to March, but really, we're only giving them a 90-day at this point in time.
But you have to give the six months.
Right, so we, so...
And then 90.
Okay.
That's right.
Right. So at this point, are we making, as we discussed earlier, a six-month extension plus another 90 days?
Plus 90 days, correct.
There's the retroactive.
Yes.
So technically, it's 90 days a pop, so you'd be giving it three 90 days.
Three 90 days.
Okay.
That's the, okay. Again, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion to approve three 90-day extensions.
Retroactive to September 1, 2023.
Yes.
And I'll second.
Okay, so motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. All right, so with that, we do need to have a little discussion, being that we have four new board members. In the past, we've had a workshop meeting at various points, just to sit and discuss different issues. One of them is being, you know, the process, you know, as, you know, what's expected of the planning board, you know, how the process works, and also touching on some of the other items, such as infrastructure, you know, things like that, just to make everybody kind of bring up to speed, familiarize them with, with what's out there. Do we, well, do we want to schedule that again? That's, that's the most important thing. Do we want to do something for, something in February? And then that would probably be, you know, again...
I think it's a good idea, definitely.
It'd be great to be on second page.
Yeah.
I can't be here in the first week in February.
Yes. Yes, you did mention that.
We have a meeting on the...
First week in, the first week in February you can't, but beyond that, towards latter part of the month here, okay. So with that, do we want to schedule something for...
Do like the last week in January, you know, the week of 22nd, maybe?
I don't know.
Because we don't have any meetings that week, and we do a Wednesday evening or something. There'll be nothing going on here, but we could use the boardroom, you know?
Yeah, we could do, you know, do it here. I don't know if anybody wants to do something for, was that, what are you talking about, like the 24th or 31st?
It's a Wednesday, middle of the week.
I won't be available.
I'm available.
Yeah?
I won't be available on that day.
On which the...
The 24th.
On the 24th. Do we have to do it on a Wednesday, or could it be like a Tuesday or Thursday?
It could be Tuesday or Thursday.
Well, Tuesday ZBI.
Tuesday to 23rd.
Thursday to 25th.
Thursday would be better, because a lot of the staff's involved with the ZBI.
Okay. All right.
I'm good for Thursday.
I'm good for Thursday.
Thursday?
Yeah, we're all good on Thursday down here.
You're good?
Thursday to 25th, also...
25th, yeah, it works for me.
Six o'clock?
Okay.
Six o'clock, or seven o'clock?
Six o'clock work?
Or seven?
Six, if everyone can make it.
Works for me, six o'clock is fine.
Six o'clock is fine.
It's me, makes a reason for me to leave the office earlier. Okay.
Is that something you'd like us to attend?
Yeah, is that, so I was going to say, would you guys be able to hit that date? Okay. All right, so entertain a motion to have the secretary set up a workshop meeting for January the 25th.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's made. Do we have a second?
Come on, Tommy.
I second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, other than that, I don't know if anybody else, they need to bring up at this time that needs to be addressed?
Can I just, one thing for the board is aware, with respect to the Downey litigation, we have made, I made a cross-motion to vacate the stipulation. The submission date is this Friday before Judge Rosa, I'm hearing, waiting on a response from Downey's counsel, and then it's up to the court to decide. So with respect to that stipulation, you know, there's a motion to be made to vacate the stipulation, and, you know, it may be restored, you know, if that's granted, then the case will be restored to the trial calendar, and we'll probably make some motions regarding summary judgment, and we'll see how the court deals with that. But it may be going to trial.
Okay.
And then with respect to that, I don't know if...
And this is the Downey?
Yes. So I don't know if, you know, Downey, we can have a discussion, I'll have a discussion with respect to Downey's attorneys, whether they, they still want to proceed with the review of the, the draft environmental impact statement, because, you know, that's, that obligation, regardless of stipulations in place or not, you know, the, we have to proceed with the review of that. I had a discussion with the town board regarding whether they wanted to short-circuit that process, but the town board wants to, at least the last time I discussed the issue with them, they want to have the SECA process, the environmental impact statement process completed, and then they'll make the determination regarding finding statements.
Okay, all right, well, we'll see what, what happens with that, and they'll have to come, you know, when they all come back, and again, we, now we have a, quite a few new members to the board.
Right.
So this is going to, this, this is going to take a little bit, because we're going to need to bring all the new members up to speed, and, you know, again, it's, this is a, you know, it's, it's not an easy project there, number one, and there's a lot of moving parts to it that still haven't been hashed out, so...
Right. I mean, the first step is, and this is something we can talk about in the workshop, but, so there is a law, a proposed local law that would amend zoning to permit the use, that was introduced by the town board, and that's the point of the environmental impact statement review. The board, the planning board issued a positive declaration under SECA, which means, when a positive declaration is issued, that means the applicant has to prepare an environmental impact statement, which is reviewed by the board after a scoping document is created, and then, you know, the board created a scoping document. Right now, the point in the process where we are is, we have to compare the document that's been submitted to the scoping document to make a determination as to whether or not they've included all the information that was required by the scoping document. After, you know, at that point, there's some iteration as to what additional information has to be included. When that information is included, then, and the board determines that the environmental impact statement is complete, then there's a public hearing that's held, comments are received from the public, which the applicant then has to respond to, and the response to the comments from the public is called the final environmental impact statement. And then after, the board then prepares, the planning board as lead agency would then prepare the final environmental impact statement, which incorporates all the comments that have been submitted, and then based on that final environmental impact statement, one of the things that's in there is various alternatives and suggestions, and then based on that, the town board would issue a finding statement with respect to the local law, and should it, the town board then adopt the local law, the planning board then would have the authority to go forward and issue, or issue a determination as to site plan and special permit based on the proposed local law. But right now, there is no, no law in place that authorizes the use. So it is, it's, it's a little bit out of the ordinary, or, you know, it's not a typical site plan or subdivision application.
Okay, so with that said, I'll entertain, if we have nothing else to talk about, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.[1781.82]